Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to Committee of the Whole Meeting today, Monday, January sixteenth. I actually only have one announcement, Tom, you got, you want to share?
Yeah, just a a notice to all of our residents from the far east that New Year is coming up, and we'd just like to say Gong He Fat Choi to everyone, and the new year this year is the year of the rabbit. So we should have lots of babies born in Drumheller this year.
Thank you, Tom. Any additions to the agenda? Nope, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Tony?
Hang on here. I move that to adopt the agenda for the January sixteen twenty twenty-three Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented.
Seconder, Lisa, all in favor? Carried an emotion to accept the minutes of the Committee of the Whole presented December twelfth. Patrick?
I move to approve the minutes of the December twelfth twenty twenty-two Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented.
Seconder, Stephanie, comments? Sorry, Crystal, I gotta look at you. All in favor? Carried. And can I get a motion to accept the Drumheller District Seniors Foundation as well as the Drumheller Public Library minutes? Tom?
I move to accept as information the minutes from the Drumheller and District Seniors Foundation November twenty-second meeting, and minutes from the Drumheller Public Library August to December meetings as presented.
Seconder? Crystal? Comments? All in favor? Carried, perfect. Alright, let's move on to corporate services, and we have the presentation from BDO Canada, uh, our town of Drumheller auditors, and I will let you both introduce yourselves and welcome.
Testing?
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name's Alan Lister. Uh, this is Mitchell Kennedy. Uh, we're from BDO Canada, and as, as you mentioned, Heather, we're the auditors for the town. Uh, what we're doing today is, uh, when we kick off the audit, we kind of have a little bit of a planning letter that we kind of go through with council, it kind of outlines, you know, our process, um, and things of that nature. Mitch is gonna go through that in a minute, and I encourage as we walk through it, just, you know, ask questions as we go if you have any and things like that, so. Uh, just to start off, does anybody have any questions to begin with?
Council, you all ready? No, I think we'll just get the presentation up and then we'll let you guys go, and then, yes, council, if you would mind, if you have questions such, just let me know. Perfect, wonderful.
Okay, sorry, just trying to get the screen to work here. Okay, so, uh, this is a planning letter, um, to you guys to basically explain what our audit process is, kind of where we're at in the scope of things. Um, so the first page here that you'll see, we're just kind of highlighting and going to explain some key issues that we go through through our audit process. Uh, I'll go through what our audit approach is, and while I go through the audit approach, I'll highlight kind of what the significant risks are within the engagement. Um, and towards the presentation where we come back here and do the final presentation, where we have the financial statements and the final report to those charged with governance, we'll basically, uh, reconfirm our independence with you guys, which allows us to do this engagement, and we will provide at an end result or audit on your financial statements as a whole to let you know whether or not your financial statements are gonna be free from material misstatement. Sorry, I don't jumped too far ahead here. So, uh, my name is Mitchell Kennedy. I'm the senior manager on the engagement. I've been dealing in the public sector world for about ten years. Uh, Alan Lister is the partner on the file. He's got roughly twenty years of experience in dealing with these situations. Um, and before I move on, uh, I would just like to highlight at the beginning stage here that we are truly independent of the town itself, which allows us to do, uh, the assurance work on your financial statements this year. So, we initiated this engagement way back in November where we started doing our interim fieldwork and planning. While we were here for interim, what we ended up testing was effectively the interim numbers for your income statement, so we covered, uh, your revenue and your expenses, and we essentially vouched it to the corresponding supporting documents. Um, and, and while we were doing that, we didn't find any significant issues. Everything appeared to be as it should. Um, and as of today, uh, we're currently presenting the audit planning report that you guys see right here in front of you. Uh, our final audit fieldwork is scheduled to be roughly around March sixth, um, where we'll come in and effectively do the top-up testing on your income statement, but we'll also finish testing the balance sheet items as well, do the financial statements and the corresponding no disclosures, and effectively come back here in April, where we'll present these to you guys, at which point we will effectively release the audit report after your approval of the financial statements that we end up presenting to you guys. So, our responsibility, uh, is to work with management towards the timely issuance of the financial statements, which will be roughly around April. Uh, we will provide timely and constructive management letters, which basically say or highlight whether or not we came across any significant issues throughout the entire audit process. And if we have any significant findings, we will present the significant findings to the member of council, uh, including any key audit and accounting issues that we come across. And while we do this, we also are required to gain an understanding of your internal controls and highlight any control deficiencies that we see, which might impact the actual audit itself. So, this next slide, I just want to reiterate, we are not aware of any situations of fraud, but we do have to have this discussion with you. Um, so it is our responsibility to identify and assess risks of material misstatement which might surround fraud, and to reiterate, we haven't found any situations of fraud. Um, we are also required to attain sufficient appropriate audit evidence regarding the assessed risks that we have that might address fraud. And it's our goal to, it's our requirement to respond appropriately to any fraud or suspected fraud that we come across through this audit. Uh, if at any time you guys are aware or come across fraud, um, we we would like you to effectively communicate that with us so we can address that or help you guys address it as well. Um, it's also, uh, management's assessment of risk of the financial statements. We need to assess whether or not, or we need to assess what the impact of the potential fraud might be. Um, and we also have a process for identifying and responding to the risk of fraud if it was to ever be identified. We have to always communicate any situation of fraud that might arise or that we might come across with management and council. Um, and we will communicate that um, through the form of management letters and through direct conversations with council as well. And to reiterate at the bottom there, we are currently not aware of any situations of fraud. So, these two main significant risks that you will see on here, these are very common risks that you will see among e- effectively all municipalities. Um, and so the main one, main two being revenue recognition, so this is more or less when you are recognizing revenue throughout the year. There's often sometimes cutoff issues with whether or not you would have applied for a grant at year-end and whether or not that's recorded, and determining whether or not you're recognizing that specific grant in correspondence with any kind of expenses or things that you've incurred throughout the year. Um, although it is a significant risk, we help mitigate that risk by doing appropriate evidence around year-end testing and making sure we're vouching the corresponding expenses to make sure things should be or should not be recognized in the appropriate period. Uh, the other one is the management override of controls. So this is just a natural risk that you will have if you have, uh, a smaller accounting department where you might have one or two individuals that theoretically have the ability to create, pose, adjust, do whatever entry or have access to all the modules within the accounting system. Um, the way we mitigate this risk is we effectively looked at all manual adjusting journal entries posted by what is deemed as a super user within the accounting software. Um, so we won't just look at some of them, we will look at all manual adjusting journal entries that effectively get posted by these users. So even though these are two significant risks, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that that risk is mitigated. And to reiterate, these are common risks among municipalities of this size.
Just to note, those are the significant ones, again, and Mitch is saying those are the common ones. All of our municipalities have these ones. Um, and as he mentioned before, we do our process, like kind of understanding the system, we're looking at all, all risk areas as well. Uh, we just require to kind of bring forth these significant ones necessarily, so.
Okay, so, um, materiality, so materiality is calculated using a basis of revenue, and this specific engagement, we use a basis of two point five percent of the total revenue of the municipality. And so, because this is interim, uh, when the planning took place, we don't have final revenue numbers, so this is kind of our planning materiality before we get to the final, at which point we will potentially readjust final if our preliminary estimates on what the revenue amount should be is different. So, this number will effectively change every year as it is driven based off of what your revenue amounts are on a year-to-year basis. Um, it also talks about clearly trivial. So clearly trivial is basically just a number that's, it's five percent of our materiality. So what that means is for all errors that are under five percent, we'll, we'll look at them to see if they have any kind of potential impact to the readers of the financial statement. But typically, if it's under five percent, um, it doesn't necessarily mean it will have a significant impact on the user, and we might not, uh, i- it won't be a significant impact to the financial statement, so we'll effectively say the difference is insignificant or it has no real impact to the user. Uh, at the end of the year, we will provide with, provide to you guys what is called a schedule of likely aggregate misstatement. So it's basically a list of all adjusting journal entries that we propose should be made, if there are any, that have not actually made it to the financial statements. And so they're effectively unadjusted journal entries, but they're journal entries that we suggest should be made, but if it ever reaches seventy-five percent of materiality, we start to look at that number and we say, okay, this might actually have an impact on the users, and we're gonna propose that these adjustments actually make it to the financial statements. It's possible that there's nothing on there, there might be something, but just so you know, if there are unadjusted statements, we will provide that to you in a written format at the end of the year.
So materiality is a tool that we use as auditors, try to be as efficient as we can through our audit. So the idea behind it is, is that, um, we're gonna give you financial statements that you, a user can make decisions on, right? Um, what we consider a material error is something that if you had a set of numbers that was, um, a dollar difference from each of them, and you made a different decision, that would be a materially misstated financial statement. So what we're trying to do is to make sure that you're having a statement that is correct within the, the standards, and you're gonna make those decisions as far as things go. Just to give you kind of examples of that, the most common ones are things like cutoff. And what I mean by that is if you, we get through the audit, uh, an accounts payable comes in in February that related to December, it's a hundred dollars, so to speak. Um, lots of effort would have to go into adjust those financial statements for that hundred dollars. It's not gonna affect anybody's decision. It's gonna be an expense of the following period type of thing, right? In those cases, those won't affect users' decisions, therefore, where they're not material. Now, all the statements or adjustments we talk about, we'll present those to management, and if we want, we feel we need to make those adjustments, we will, for sure, obviously. And also, it's not a line in the sand either. It's not like you're five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, you're misstated, and five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you're not. Um, we use it as a tool to be effective in our audit. Um, other examples I use are, for example, if we do variance analysis and we see that legal costs have gone up by twenty thousand dollars or fifty thousand, that's double what it was last year, but it's not material based on ours. But it's that kind of balance that, you know, you would wanna spend a little more time on, determine what's there, things of that nature, right? So that just kind of gives you a feel what that materiality is for.
Okay, so this is kind of a flow chart of what we go through from an auditing process perspective. So here you can kind of see how things are numbered and kind of how the flow works here. Uh, so at the beginning, we start with the whole scoping where we basically do our preliminary review of your financial statement areas to kind of determine what the potential risk might be with these specific financial statement areas. So then we move to identifying and assessing the risk. So we focus on those financial statement areas that contain a potential risk. Then the next step is, if these are actual risks, we then have to design an audit process to help mitigate these risks so we can get comfort over the numbers. So the way that we do that is we then move to number four, is we obtain audit evidence. So we need to get comfort over the numbers that we are currently looking at to ensure that they, they are factually what they should be. And then, once we're done with step number four, we kind of go down to step five where we form an opinion. So this is what we present at the end of the year, where it's effectively our, our auditor's report, which is like the first couple pages of the financial statements. Um, and we, we provide an opinion on the financial statements about whether or not they're clear from material misstatements. Then we move to step number six is we do the wrap-up with number six, is we report and communicate our opinion and details of the matter throughout our entire audit engagement to let you guys know whether or not it was a clean audit or whether or not there are any issues throughout the process.
So in this example too, you can see there are circles. So like if you get to one area, we get to audit evidence, we discovered that we, we need to dive deeper, we'll go back again and look at, design those procedures to ta- to tackle that as well, right? It's a very fluid thing as well, so.
So, this is just a update you guys and a change in standards in this year. So there's a new auditing standard. It's called CAS three fifteen or Canadian Audit Standards three fifteen. So, it's just a new standard that effectively beefed up the documentation that we need in our audit file to ensure that we're encompassing all possible risks that might be affecting any specific engagement at any specific point in time. So, we have to be a lot more detail on the assessment of inherent and control risks. Um, and basically determine if this is a risk, what is the likelihood and magnitude of this risk, like what would the potential error be from a dollar value perspective, and what is the likely, likelihood of this error to potentially, um, take place? Uh, and that can help drive the risk of specific areas within that engagement, and whether or not we need to do more work in those specific areas because the risk might be, it might have a significant impact. Uh, and we have to do a more in-depth dive into the internal system of controls to make sure that the appropriate controls that are currently in place are doing what they should be doing, and whether or not we find that there's any lacking or mitigating control which could lead to, lead to a different risk within the engagement. And then we also have to evaluate the current use that you guys have technology, what are you guys using for software, is it appropriate, and is it being used in the right way? And then, basically, we do a standback requirement, which makes sure, did we do what we should be doing for the scope of our engagement? Um, and this is just our audit approach. Uh, I'm not gonna go too much into this, but this is basically to say that for every one partner that we have at BDO, we typically try to have it so we have no more than six staff members currently working on each, under each partner, and that's to ensure that we're providing every engagement that we work on the necessary attention that they need for any specific time, and that's to help drive consistency, uh, focus more on a digital approach, and make sure that you guys are getting the correct service that you need for us to be here. Um, this is just to kind of highlight this, uh, our accounting software that we use for auditing purposes. It's just our digital audit suite, it's called APT Next Gen. It's kind of where we have all our documentation and support for it. Um, it's in, i- it's our software, so we have complete control of any documentation or use that comes out of that software, and it's secure and locked down, so, um, on the IT side, we're safe there. And then there's just the BDO portal that we use in correspondence with management to exchange documents, to secure cloud-based software that if, for whatever reason, Mauricio or somebody on his accounting team needs to send us documents, they can do it through what is called their BDO portal, which is just a global exchange between us and you.
Yeah, the big thing is a, a lot of efficiency. It moves quite nicely, I think Mauricio probably can attest to that, and it's also secure, right? In this day and age, right, we wanna make sure that all those documents are secure too, so.
I won't go into too much detail. These are the last two slides here. These are just links, uh, for any one of you, if you're looking to see what's kind of changing in the, uh, public, public sector financial reporting side of things. Um, what the federal budget looked like for twenty twenty-two, um, just things to make sure that you're ready from a financial perspective going forward into the future. Uh, and o- obviously, next year, there's the change in the asset retirement obligation standard, which is gonna be required for twenty twenty-three. Uh, Sharon Mauricio is looking forward to that one. Uh, and then this is just more links on sustainability, uh, that you guys can read if you so choose to find out what's going on in the world.
Yeah, BDO's got kind of far-reaching, uh, grasp here, so to speak. We wanna make sure you guys understand, we have all those resources. If you have other questions on certain things, you see, we can probably help you out there as well, so.
Alright, well, great presentation. Council, questions? Tony?
Yeah, a lot of detail, and, uh, I just want to reiterate for the, for the assurances of the general public, the audited financial statements are very involved process of verifications and auditing, and by the time it comes to the end user, which you talk about the, the person that's looking at the financial statement, there's very strong assurances in that document than that, that of the accuracy of those numbers, correct?
Correct, like it's, uh, and we talked about that materiality and those things as well, but, uh, we're, our job is to make sure they're, uh, within the standards, um, and they're presented appropriately, so users can make those decisions for sure.
Tom?
Yeah, we've, we've had, uh, the same auditor for a number of years, and now we changed to you guys, primarily because you sponsored the Senior Men's Amateur Championship in Red Deer last year, of course. Uh, cause it all revolves around golf.
Absolutely, yep.
Um, I, I'm just wondering if you do anything different than our previous auditor, or if you've found anything that doesn't kind of work the way you guys like it? Any, any changes like that you've noticed?
Have we, while we're still at the preliminary stages, we're in the planning part of things. Uh, one of our processes is that we have to go out and look at the process orders, uh, working papers. Uh, because we do have to rely on their opening numbers, um, so we go through their process, make sure it, um, aligns with ours as well. Um, so there's nothing necessarily different. Uh, our approach is, uh, again, hopefully efficient and a risk-based approach, and we're trying to make sure we're diving into the areas that we need to, for sure, so.
And also, is the flood audit included in this, or is that totally separate, or is that
It's a separate engagement, um, but it's all part of the same, uh, quote, I believe.
I- it does impact specific financial statement areas within it, but it is, as Alan said, a separate engagement.
There is a separate engagement, there'll be a separate report for that one, I believe.
Yeah.
Special engagement, yep.
Lisa?
I just wanna say thank you for coming. It was a great presentation, and I really liked the refresher on the audit process. Helps everybody understand a lot better when you do come back with the full, complete product, so thank you.
No problem.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, Crystal, oh, hello, Crystal. She, Crystal has a question. She's online.
Thank you. Um, just in regards to the, I'm just pulling up the PDF story, the significant risks and planned responses, so um, I know that you said that these are very common ones, um, quite often municipalities have the same, um, risks. Um, and will you be providing back to the municipality of ways to eliminate those risks? I, I may have not been able to hear that part of that discussion.
So, they're, they'll always be there, um, just be ge- given the type of, um, revenue streams you have and things of that nature. So when we say a risk, um, it's not necessarily a bad thing in the sense that, um, you know, there's nothing necessarily wrong there, but we, we need to look at it because of the volume, the potential complexity, um, things of that nature. So it's not about trying to to get rid of the risk, it's just about tackling the risk, I guess is the best way to put it, so.
No, and that, that makes sense, and when you see a, uh, you know, a yield sign with a big exclamation mark and significant risks, I think people go, what?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And the other one that, uh, just to comment on it, is the management override controls. Um, you know, there are ways to, um, expand those type of, um, controls, but it's a cost benefit as well, right? So a- as far as the entities of your size, you know, you could have a, an accounting function that has, you know, many, many layers, but the cost to do that doesn't, outweighs the benefit of the one that you have, basically. So it's a cost benefit, and and you have, still have controls and things in place to mitigate that, right? So our job is to make sure those things are in place, um, and it's looked at upper.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, um, yeah, I just wanted, uh, just elaborate a bit on that Canadian Auditing Standard three fifteen, cause that was brought up to us last year, that this was coming forward. And this is actually a great tool for all municipalities to have to hit those standards, cause I like the fact that, you know, you guys do the assessment, the inherent risk, uh, internal system control, which I think Mauricio is very, and his team are really getting stronger and stronger. But the use of technology, Mauricio, we're pretty up to date on technology now, like we've invested a lot over the last few years. So we're, so I think, you know, we're trying to get, make sure that we're ready for that, all that new change, like I'm really comfortable that our, our administration team has gotten there, so.
Excellent.
Alright, okay, anybody else? Okay, well, thanks a million for coming, and, um, and just disregard Tom's thing, you didn't get it because of any of that, it's, we got it, cause Mauricio said you were the best at it, so.
We're happy to sponsor him, we appreciate it.
Alright.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well, thanks again, and, um, we'll give you guys a minute, and then we'll get our next presentation. Okay, Reg, you can let me know when you're ready, and we'll get the presentation up.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, I'm Reg Johnson, Manager of Economic Development, and, uh, so I just wanted to introduce, uh, you to Courtney Lawrence, who's, uh, been running the ISL portion of the, um, housing strategy, and she's going to be our main presenter tonight, and I'll let her do a small introduction as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to see you again. As Reg mentioned, my name is Courtney Lawrence, and I'm a community planner with ISL. Over the past few months, we've been working with administration to develop a needs assessment and the subsequent housing strategy. So tonight, I'm gonna provide you an update on what we've learned, um, and provide an overview on the draft action, so we have some new data for you based on um, some new information that we were able to get, uh, since our October seventeenth update, and we have some more detailed actions for you from the housing strategy. So tonight's presentation, I'll provide you a little bit of update on, uh, the project process and the background, just as a little bit of a refresher. And then I'll talk about, uh, some of the key findings, some of the new data that we have, and additional analyses that we've done since we last touched base with you. And then I'll get into the specific actions, some of the actions of the housing strategy itself. So development of the housing strategy involved reviewing existing town policies, bylaws, this includes your municipal development plan, your land use bylaw, background documents, what other municipalities are doing in their respective communities. We engaged with key stakeholders, with residents, with the broader community, collected data from various sources such as Statistics Canada, uh, provincial data, checking in with local realtors about median sales prices and rental rates. And from that analysis of data and what we heard from the community, we developed actions to form the housing strategy. So just a little bit of refresher on what these two parts are of the strategy that I'll be referring to. So we do a housing needs assessment, which is really focused on the data itself. So this is where we really identify what the key needs are in the community, and talk to the community themselves to hear what their experiences have been. Using those key needs that emerge from that analysis and collection of data, we then develop the housing action plan and implementation plan, which summarizes those gaps and strategies to address the identified needs, and then the implementation plan will include And then the implementation plan will include those key steps and how to move forward on those actions. Uh, which also includes identifying key leads in the community, who those partners are, and what else is maybe needed to implement those actions. So community engagement was implemented in two phases. The purpose of phase one was to better understand the community experiences and key needs that have been effaced in the community. These include identifying what barriers residents are facing, what some gaps may be, what opportunities they see for housing in the future. The second phase of engagement was focused on validating those key needs that the community identified and also what emerged from the data. So over the next few slides, I'm gonna provide a little bit of a snapshot and update on some of the new information that, uh, we've, uh, collected since October. So we know the population is aging and we know that the population is declining historically, but the number of households continues to increase. And we're anticipating that to continue to increase over the next ten years as well. We know that there are affordability concerns. Median household income is not keeping pace with inflation. Household sizes are on the smaller side. Most households are one and two-person households. We know about a quarter of the millennium population are currently living with their parents. Most are owner households and one in four Drumheller households do not live in acceptable housing. And close to one in five households are living in unaffordable housing. Housing stock in the community is primarily single detached. Most homes have three or more bedrooms. And most homes are more than thirty years old, and that's about seventy-five percent are more than thirty years old. So there is an aging housing stock in the community. We also know based on a search of, uh, Airbnb information that there are about a hundred short-term vacation rentals in the community. As of October two thousand and twenty-two. So we got some, uh, median sales prices and sales information from, uh, the local real estate agency. And we found that as of September two thousand and twenty-two, the median sales price for single detached homes and apartments. They were comparable at approximately two hundred and thirty thousand. However, there was a significant increase, um, you'll see there on the chart on your right-hand side with semi-detached. So in two thousand and twenty-two, that was significantly higher than what, uh, the average or the median sales rate for semi-detached had been. In the past, uh, seven to ten years. A majority of sales also have been for single detached homes. It, it accounts for over ninety percent of sales since two thousand and thirteen. And only a handful of other housing types, that would be apartments or semi-detached or duplexes. Um, are accounted for those sales over the last ten years. And this largely has to do with the housing stock in the community. So as I mentioned earlier, more than seventy-five percent are single detached. And as of, uh, September of this year, only seven, um, non-single detached homes. So this would be apartments or semi-detached were sold in the community as compared to. A hundred and forty-eight of single detached homes that have been sold to date as of September two thousand and twenty-two. And just for additional context, on average, there's only about two semi-detached homes available for sale at any given time. And about four apartment units available for sale at any given time. Uh, and this compares to an average of forty-eight single detached homes available for sale at any given time. So there really is a limited stock other than single detached homes. So based on that information of what the median sales prices were, what we know of median household income. And trying to achieve an affordable monthly housing cost, so that spending, uh, lesser, not spending more than thirty percent of your income. On household, um, expenses such as utility, on mortgage. We did an affordability analysis to see what would be considered affordable for, uh, residents in the community. So as you can see here, for the most part, uh, many households, uh, could afford a single detached home. Where you will see some challenges is if the household is only able to provide a five percent down payment. So generally speaking, uh, most or approximately half at least could experience or could spend, um, ten percent, twenty percent down. And that would be okay and have an affordable home. Definitely see that apartment units are more affordable options. We don't really have any concerns about affordability there. And spending more than thirty percent on housing costs, but as I mentioned, there's limited housing stock for apartment units. So now we're getting into the private rental markets. So based on provincial data, we noticed or we found that the average, uh, rental rates for private market rentals. Is approximately eight hundred to eight hundred and seventy-five. However, we know this is not reflective of the majority of the private market that is captured in this survey. And so when we look at the actual data that's available, um, based on what's available for rent in the community. We know those rental rate ranges are a lot broader. So we're actually looking closer to eight hundred and seventy-five to fourteen hundred. Dollars as an average rental rate for ranging from one to three-bedroom units. And that was based on October twenty-two, uh, data. We also know that there is a significant shortage in rental units in the community. So the rental rate or the rental vacancy rate itself is typically close to zero percent. At any given time, you may not be able to find a rental unit in the community. When we did, uh, search this fall, there was only three units that were listed, um, online. And anytime you look, it could range from zero to none, or the actual available date maybe months out. And not be able to meet your immediate needs or residents' immediate rental needs. So we did the same analysis for affordability for renter households. Instead of using the median, uh, rental or the median household income, we did do a smaller rate, a lower rate of income for that. Renter households on their own tend to have a lower household income compared to owner households. So we wanted this to be a bit more reflective of what is typically experienced by renter households. So we looked at, uh, fifty thousand dollars as a household income. And we used the numbers from what we found available in the community. So ranging from eight seventy-five to fourteen hundred for a three-bedroom unit. Based again on not spending more than thirty percent of household income. And including anticipated costs for electricity, for, um, property insurance, things like that. We noticed that based on what households are able to afford now, what their median household income is now. Approximately seventy percent of Drumheller residents or Drumheller households are able to afford one and two-bedroom units. But if we're looking at larger units, then it's looking at closer to about fifty percent of households that are able to afford a three-bedroom unit. From a policy perspective, as I mentioned, we looked at the town's land use bylaw, municipal development plan. Uh, they tend to be very supportive and, um, flexible as it relates to residential development. Goals and objectives in the MDP emphasize sustainability and they're supportive of, uh, developing complete communities. They also, uh, have policies, the MDP also has policies that supports housing diversity in particular. As I mentioned, complete community design, so that's including a mix of not just residential uses. But looking at other community amenities and facilities in the, in the neighborhood itself. It's also supportive of secondary residents and flex units. The land use bylaw uses a form-based approach to zoning, which is a little bit different than a majority of the municipalities in Alberta. Where the focus is placed on, uh, development standards versus the actual use itself. So it's more focused on setbacks, height, parking, things like that. However, the land use bylaw in Drumheller is actually quite flexible. So there's a lot of those regulations that you may typically see in other communities and their land use bylaws that actually adds to costs. So things like parking requirements or not, um, allowing, uh, secondary suites. Or having, um, a maximum number of dwelling units on a parcel. Those have largely been removed from a lot of the town's districts, so it is quite flexible and supporting additional, um, housing density. And diversity in the community. So now getting into anticipated growth. So the total number of households, as I mentioned, while the population has historically been slightly decreasing. Households are getting smaller and households continue to increase. So we're anticipating the number of households in the community to grow by approximately three hundred and seventy to four hundred and twenty-nine households. By two thousand and thirty-one. And when we look at both the low and medium anticipated growth, it's anticipated that, uh, seniors will largely make up. Uh, um, the most significant growth. So by two thousand and thirty-one, we're expecting about twenty-five percent of the population to be seniors aged sixty-five years or older. So using those number of households that we've identified, we then identified specific housing units needed. Housing units needed is estimated based on population and growth projections, as well as historic trends. And household choices. So what have people been traditionally liking or choosing for their home? We look at what the population, how it's been growing and decreasing in different age cohorts. How households are forming and what their previous housing choices have been. So one thing I'd like to note too, that while historic growth trends are used to predict future need. Conditions such as decisions on growth and development, uh, decisions on potential density, market forces. And community aspirations can change what those future outcomes may look like. And so it will be different, it could be different than historical trends. So the total anticipated number of housing units needed by two thousand and thirty-one is approximately three hundred and sixty-seven to four hundred and twenty-six homes. Of those homes, we're anticipating seventy percent to be ownership units. We're anticipating the greatest need to be three to four-bedroom units. As I mentioned, the population is aging, so a majority of those homes will be needed for senior-led households. There is also a current need for five hundred and twenty-five affordable homes. So if you recall, I had mentioned earlier in the presentation that we've identified about one in five households in Drumheller. Are not living in affordable housing or living in housing that's not affordable. And so that's where that current unmet need of affordable housing stems from. And there's also an additional need for approximately two hundred affordable homes. We've identified, uh, that there is a current need for ten accessible homes. And anticipating additional need for about seventeen to twenty, uh, additional accessible homes. And lastly, we've identified that there is a current need for approximately seventy-eight housing units with varying support. So this includes supports for, uh, folks who have potential developmental disabilities, who need some support in their home for care. Um, and, uh, intellectual disabilities. And then there's an additional need for about eight to ten units over the next ten years as well. Um, and before I move on to the next slide, I just want to flag that while I say that there's approximately three hundred and sixty, about four hundred homes. That are anticipated to be needed, it's not meant that they're all new builds. There could be renovations, repairs, affordability through inherent, um, affordability as a unit ages. So it's not meant to say that four new homes need to be built in order to meet these targets or these projections. So what have we learned and what do we need to focus the actions on? So we need to increase development and diversify the housing stock. Seniors identified a need for smaller two-bedroom units, single-story homes. And ones that are pet-friendly so that they can downsize but remain living independently. And while they can move from their larger home, their three or four-bedroom home to a smaller home, that allows another family to move into that home. And so you'll see movement along what we call the housing continuum that identifies different spaces for different people's needs. There are also several town and sites that are located in great locations that can be used for residential development. And as I've noted, there's a need to increase affordable homes as there is that current unmet need and anticipated additional need. For residents looking to both own and rent. There's a need to increase the availability and quality of rental units, given the low vacancy rate of close to zero percent at any given time. And the age of the housing stock with most being more than thirty years old. There's a need for more support services such as mental health supports, victim services, services to help seniors age in place. So that may be they can continue to live independently, but they may need some support with some landscaping or house maintenance and things like that. There's also a need to increase the housing options and supports to help, uh, reduce the number of residents that are insecure housing. And to secure housing for, uh, seasonal employees. So we heard a lot from employers and employees themselves. That they had, uh, given the tight rental market, private rental market, they had challenges finding homes. We've also identified, uh, a need to regulate short-term vacation rentals to further support, uh, maintaining homes in the long-term rental market. And to address concerns that residents raised through the engagement process. And lastly, there's a need to leverage, uh, funding opportunities such as rental construction financing, uh, the Rapid Housing Initiative. The National, National Housing Co-Investment Fund to support the development of new rental and affordable housing. And opportunities for renovations and repairs to existing housing. So using those key housing needs that I have identified, four goals and actions, uh, under each of those goals were developed. So they are intended to act as a system where multiple actions work together. There's no one singular action that can address all of the needs. And it's also not intended that it's the town's sole responsibility to move forward on all of the actions, but it is a community plan. That, uh, brings stakes, stakeholders together to, uh, with the expertise to lead the various housing actions. So the first goal there, as part of encouraging diverse mix of housing types. Actions include, uh, those to org- targeted towards increasing the variety of housing types and sizes. Increasing housing options for seniors and older adults by setting targets of accessible homes. Expanding housing pilot projects that work in other communities, uh, to, to Drumheller itself. And seeing how those can fit within the context of Drumheller. Diversifying tenure options. So looking at potential mixed model housing, so it's not just a standalone rental building and maybe it's ownership and rental on the same building. Increasing affordable options and identifying priority locations like those town oath sites that I, uh, mentioned earlier. As part of increasing the supply and maintaining existing rental housing, actions include working with residents and short-term vacation rental managers. To develop regulations, increasing purpose-built rentals and secondary suites. Addressing employee housing and landlord and tenant relations. As part of facilitating support services, actions include providing wraparound support services. So when, uh, someone needs an additional support, maybe it's mental health support, maybe it's, um, care, home maintenance. But those are included as part of the housing as well. Uh, exploring a coordinated access model, so making sure that all, uh, community organizations are working together to best address the needs of the community. And addressing emergency and transitional housing by working with, uh, property managers to secure units. And lastly, as the fourth goal there is part of strengthening partnerships and community capacity. Actions include identifying or address, sorry, developing a central housing hub to share information and resources. And what's, uh, what the opportunities are in the community, what incentives are available. Coordinating regular forums to bring stakeholders and partners together to move the actions and pro- progress forward. And educational campaigns to promote those incentives and funding opportunities. And tracking mechanisms to help measure the implementation of the strategy. So over the next few slides, I want to highlight some of the immediate actions in more detail. So these were the ones that have been identified as, uh, priorities to be addressed over the next few years. Uh, they're not all of the actions that have been identified, but I wanted to focus the ones that we have, um, indicated should be addressed as a priority action. So as I mentioned, there is a need to attract developers by promoting specific housing units needed in the community. Uh, promoting the flexibility that community, the town's processes for planning and development currently allow. That flexibility that's available in the land use bylaw. And residential incentives that are currently available in the town. And also exploring the potential for setting targets or requirements for the provision of affordable and accessible housing. There was a recent study that was released, uh, last week by the Canadian Home Builders Association. Where they, uh, did a national municipal benchmarking study and they explored indicators of how affordable, um, housing is addressed in municipalities. So they have three indicators about, uh, or look at, they look at three indicators that play a role in support. That play a role in supporting the timelines of getting affordable housing developed in communities. So they look at the process itself, so what information is available to builders, what the timelines currently are. And what the development charges are. So they conducted the study. In I think about twelve municipalities and they evaluated them based on those three areas. And so it's important to continue to promote that the town has good process, it has good incentives. It works with builders and to make sure that the builders and developers know that that's available in the community. And that they'd be well supported um by administration and by um organizations in the community. Also, given the construction costs currently, and we know that there's rising interest rates and inflation rates. And there is a high need for affordable housing in the community. Providing affordable housing is a priority. However, it can be challenging for a developer on their own to make that work within their limitations. So the use of town owned land provides a great resource that can be leveraged. To secure additional financing and funding from uh the province and from the federal government. Uh there are several streams available which include um providing low cost loans or fundings to address affordable and accessible ho- housing. As well as rental housing. And these programs also support uh mixed income, mixed tenure, mixed use models. So that multiple housing priorities can be addressed um in one project. And by securing external funding, um these these sources and this additional funding can be. A more of an incentivized and attractive to developers looking to build in the community. Um and one example I just wanna highlight there, uh the town of Hinton recently identified that with their town owned land that they wanted to develop housing. So they worked with CMHC to use the Rapid Housing Initiative funding. And have secured funding to uh develop as part of their phase one of development, um ten affordable housing units with them. So it doesn't have to be a large scale development, you can start small and use that funding and work your way up. The other area that we focused on, as I mentioned, rental housing is a big concern with the low vacancy rates and limited availability. So while STR, Short Term Vacation Rentals, provide a lot of value to the community, helping with tourism and attracting visitors. Um in speaking with community members and stakeholders, they identified some concerns with short term vacation rentals. And that they're potentially taking away from um rentals that could be used long term. So one of the actions identified is to work with the community and including owners and uh operators of short term rentals. To develop a bylaw to regulate them uh through options such as business licensing and other regulations that make sense within the community. And this is currently even being advanced by administration, so Reg could speak to that in more detail if there are questions. A second priority overall is building new more, new and additional uh rental housing. So again, given the advantage of the town owned sites that are available. Looking at how they can be prioritized for use and development of rental housing is one of the key priorities. There is funding available through the Rental Housing Construction Financing Initiative that provides low cost loans. And rental uh the Rapid Housing Initiative can help with rental housing development as well. And on a smaller scale, the land use bylaws, I mentioned, it's very supportive of additional housing. So for individual households and residents, they can look to providing secondary suites. Um and based on feedback that we've received, it may not be as well known how easy that may be able for households to achieve. They may not be as aware of that ability for them to take that on themselves. Uh and one last thing I just wanna highlight here, while not directly within control of the town. Um the continued advocacy for increases to provincial subsidies and rental supplement programs. So they can better support households that have um concerns with providing or being able to achieve their rent. Another item that emerged was the addressing housing for employees and especially seasonal uh employees where they had a really hard time. Employers and employees both shared they had a hard time securing housing, offers were turned down because employees couldn't get housing. So looking at additional ways that we can again provide more rental housing and housing options in the community. One area we wanted to explore that could be explored was looking at the DHA and its mandate. So they play an important role in the community in providing community and affordable housing. And given that role, there's an opportunity to have further discussion in whether there are benefits to um expanding its mandate. To develop housing um and or focus on target needs. So as an example, uh the Whistler Housing Authority is a municipally owned, it's a a kind of arms length. Authority of the municipality. And they're solely focused on providing employee housing and making sure, I think it's about seventy, they wanna have a target of seventy five percent. Of employees living within the municipality. And so that's what the housing authority is dedicated to. And as I mentioned earlier, short term rentals, they do provide a value in the community and especially for. Uh seasonal employees who are looking for those shorter term rentals. So looking at and moving forward of that regulation again will further support the provision of short term rentals for. Employees who may be only here on a short term basis. One other action I wanted to highlight was the use of modular housing. So in other communities, we are seeing this more and more and as it's often cheaper and quicker to construct. So modular housing can be used in Drumheller to address the immediate needs of employees or seasonal employees in the community. In addition to other residents as well. And this approach is currently being used in some PC communities. And that affordable housing example I mentioned in Hinton, they're also using modular housing for the that first phase of development. And the last few actions I wanted to highlight in particular are related to relationship building and education. So one of those indicators of that um Canadian Home Builders Association survey that I mentioned earlier uses the evaluation. Of their rental uh the residential development process. And knowing the steps to go through that, so what are the studies that are involved? What's the process? What needs to be submitted with the application? Having all that information available, having those terms of references available for builders and developers to have easy readily access, readily accessible. Helps with their applications and it helps with timelines related to development. So making sure that all the information is available online, it's readily accessible to builders, to developers. And identifying early in the process what specific recommendations or what specific technical studies may be needed by the town. Will help to streamline that process and set clear expectations for developers and builders. The current housing website that we've had for this project can be converted into a central hub. That hosts information and links, so everyone can just be going to that website and be linked to the appropriate information. And not get lost in various channels, uh trying to find what they need to know for development or for building or for their applications. And residents and outside developers may not be completely aware of what opportunities are available or what they can or cannot do. While some policies and why the land use by law may be flexible, it's not often um easily interpreted by residents. So they may not actually be aware of what can and can happen in the district that they currently have. So just using educational campaigns, promotional marketing strategies. To advertise that information and the open for business and the support that's available within the town. Uh more broadly um is a big advantage that the town has. So I just wanna briefly highlight some of those funding opportunities, uh a few of which I mentioned earlier. So given the rising interest rates, cost of construction, it can be di- difficult to develop housing that is affordable to residents. Um overall, housing starts are decreasing. And in Alberta, there was a year over year decrease of about twenty five percent of urban housing starts in November twenty twenty two compared to November twenty twenty one. And across Canada, those housing starts decreased by fifteen percent over the same period. So taking advantage of that available funding opportunities and low cost loans is necessary and often requires the town commitment. Of additional funds or lands. So leveraging the town owned land. And applying for funding to develop new affordable housing options, rental housing, accessible housing should be a priority. And the last thing I wanna cover here is the implementation plan. So this is where the actions come together. And it provides a roadmap for how and when the actions are meant to be implemented over the next ten years. So not everything can be done tomorrow. Some things take some time, some things you wanna prioritize and get it done quicker. So the implementation plan will provide a step by step guide. That explains what the actions are and what steps are needed for each of those actions and how to advance them. It will also identify timelines. So whether it's a short term priority or a longer term priority, maybe it's ongoing, it's something you do currently and will continue to do on a regular basis. And it will also identify key leads and partners. So it's not that the town is leading every action, there's other community partners that have the expertise. To do so with support from other members of the community and the town. And lastly, we also will have uh have included the key performance indicators. So how will you measure implementation of these actions? So that data and those indicators are included in the implementation plan as well. And the implementation plan is meant to be more of a living document. So how do your priorities change? How do your resources change? Timelines can change as your priorities change and as capacity changes within the community as well. And with that, I wanna thank you for your time tonight. I know it was a lot of information I threw at you guys, I appreciate your attention. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Courtney. Alright, who wants to start? Tony wants to start?
Gotta get in there before Tom. Thank you Courtney, very detailed uh presentation there. Um I don't think anybody will argue the explosive growth in the Airbnbs from a handful to almost a hundred. Has impacted both the ownership and the rental market. I just wanna flip back to the housing demand and need slide that you put up and if you could draw a correlation here for me. You're saying the greatest need is for three and four bedroom units. Um how does that relate to the two point two people per household? And that style being the most unaffordable in the rental market, like how can you tie that together for me here?
Yeah, that's a great question. So when we do the anticipated housing needs, it's based on historic choices. So some people are living in unaffordable homes, are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing, related costs, rent and mortgage. But they may not necessarily consider it to be unaffordable to them. That's the thirty percent is a benchmark that is used nationally, it's used within this community. And when we do the projections, it's based on previous choices. So because a household is smaller doesn't necessarily mean that they just want a one bedroom, maybe when they're starting out and they have more limited income. They want that one bedroom to have more flexibility with their income for other items. But there may also be households that are one or two person households, but with COVID are working from home. And so they want that three bedroom, four bedroom unit, so they have office space, they can use the bedroom as an office, they had still have a guest room. To do that. So it is a bit tricky to try kind of reconcile, yes, we know they're smaller households. The choices are still three to four bedroom units, but also we know they're not as affordable. It is a bit tricky to reconcile that, but with the big item is I think in with Drumheller is that there's not the choice. That's available. We only have limited rentals. We don't have a lot of actually three bedroom rental units. Most of it is houses that are rented. We don't have more of the traditional maybe townhouse that are three or four bedroom rental units. They are the house, so there's a lot, there's a larger cost associated to that as well. So I think the big takeaway for that is just generally increasing the diversity of the stock and providing that choice for households to move. As their lifestyle changes, as their need changes, as their income level changes throughout their life.
Okay, so when you talk about anticipated homes, meaning you're not, you're not targeting one. Single detached or joint, you're talking a global housing.
Lisa? Oh, Crystal?
Great, thank you so much for all the information. Um I think. So we're, I think it's, no one's gonna argue that we're not a tourist destination community, that is very well known. Our visitors increase in certain months of the year and as it's a goal to try to attract more visitors throughout the year. But comes out, we need more employees to fulfill those jobs of tourism and of course, the housing is one of the biggest problems. And I know there's a lot of employers in our community who would love to hire some seasonal workers, but they have nowhere to house them. So. Um you know, the housing thing is a big problem and I. We're not Banff and Canmore, but we're getting to that Banff and Canmore where we're becoming a really big tourist destination. And so. Um I like the benefit of what short term rentals provide to our community, but at the same time, we have to think about our long term residents too. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what kind of policy is gonna come into place in that short term rental. And uh I guess my question is kind of for Reg is how are we gonna engage those owners of those short term rentals? To help guide some type of policy that will benefit both.
Yeah, thank you for the question, uh councillor. Um so we've already started engaging the owners as well. Uh we've talked to them specifically. Um about uh you know, the need for regulation and and I've gotten their input into it. Um uh early on before we've gotten too far down the road. But uh yeah, we're gonna keep working on that ST, um short term rental by law and uh work with all the. Folks at administration and collaborate on it and uh definitely get, continue to get their feedback on it. We wanted to uh still support the tourism industry, but uh and you know, help with the quality of stay. As an example for goals uh with the, within the strategy, but also uh recognize that there's a need for regulation. And and the um owners that we talked to so far recognize that as well. And have have given us some great hints about what jurisdictions uh uh work better at it than uh than others. So we're gonna use that information and continue to develop the bylaw.
Well, and I think we're in a good position that we're kind of late to the game, but good that we could just copy another municipality where it's being actually really effective. And has been beneficial to both owners and uh residents and tourism. So um looking forward to. That short term rental policy soon, soon?
Soon, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Lisa?
Just further to that, um are we gonna be able to see or do you have copies of the Canmore, Fernie, Selvin Lake? Regulations and requirements currently? Or can, is that something I should be able to find online? Like how new is it?
So uh right now we have a, so we've uh done some benchmarking to the jurisdictions and. Uh what techniques they employ to manage within their frameworks. Um and then there are some jurisdictions, uh so there's multiple ways that the jurisdictions are going about it. Some jurisdictions have it in their business licensing by law, some have standalone ones. Uh and some have it impacting their development permit uh process. And so. We're looking at what the best fit for Drumheller is with respect to that.
So you're gonna provide those when you bring by law to the table?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then uh that last slide there, the implementation plan, when will that be available?
Um well, we have a draft of it right now and uh I was just gonna mention that um you know, as next steps. Potentially, we should form a um maybe a standing committee to review um and prioritize that next level of detail. Uh it's uh it's got a lot of uh you know, great KPIs and who might wanna work on it. Um we wanna continue to work with administration and council and our partners. But uh at this point in time, you know, we still wanna talk to our partners and see how they wanna help. Um so um yeah, and then as for members, potentially council, DHA, seniors foundation. Um Salvation Army, NHS, real estate community, uh business, um members at large. And so um yeah, we'll get through that uh and uh have that available. Weeks.
Tom?
Yeah, thank you for all your work. Couple of general comments. First of all, I went to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference last year in Regina. And went to a number of different sessions and and one of the, one of the advantages of going to that as well is that. You know, at lunch, you sit with people from other communities and you talk about what's going on and. Uh and there was a general consensus through the presentations and and through talking with other people that that. There is a housing crisis right across Canada. Um that that virtually every community, every, the people I talked to from every community said, you know, that's our number one priority, housing. That it just, there's a housing crisis everywhere. There were some communities that that had um way more difficulties than we have, by the way. Uh you you talked a little bit about um indigenous uh homelessness. Um hundreds of communities across Canada, that's a huge problem. And and we don't have a significant problem in that area here. Uh another problem that was addressed was lots and lots of communities, I mean, the average house price, million dollars. Right? Like a million dollars for for a single detached house, so we don't really have that problem as well, so. That being said, I mean, we have all sorts of housing problems, but could be worse. Um just a a couple of comments, first of all, on your slide presentation. And I I don't have the slide numbers, I just have a page number on an agenda, but under the community. And housing profile slide. I've actually got it as page thirty of my agenda package. Community and housing profile, it has a hundred and sixty-one renter households in subsidized housing. And I was just wondering if that includes um like the seniors lodges that we have, because that that is. Um rented subsidized housing for the most part. I'm just wondering if that. Because that number seems kind of low, because we have about a hundred, you know, uh just with the seniors lodges and the manners and. So just wondering about that, that number, if that, maybe it doesn't include that.
That is a great question. So that number comes from uh Census Canada, so how, renter households report on this. I don't, I'd have to look at the definition again, so that's something I can take away and get back to you on what that actually includes.
Uh page uh thirty-one of my agenda, community and housing profile. Uh and we've been talking about the short-term vacation rentals. Um so I'm just wondering about the the statistic there, it says ninety-eight short-term vacation rental units listed. Uh and you mentioned you looked at Airbnb, um there are some other sites now, Verbo. Uh and then I know of other people who are privately renting. Uh so I'm just wondering if that that number could be even significantly higher than that, than the ninety-eight that you have there.
Yeah, that's a great question as well. There is no good way as of yet to really determine the number of short-term rentals. Um there is one website that we use, uh I think it's like. AirDNA, so it's not just a search of Airbnb, but it collates the information from VRBO and from Airbnb. So that's the platform that we use to collect that number, but it is a point-in-time search. So this can fluctuate throughout the year, there may be more online in the summer, maybe there's more online in the winter if folks are going away and they want to rent out their house. So it totally definitely fluctuates, but generally, at any time we've looked in the past few months, it's been around the one-hundred number and we use that AirDNA website.
Yeah, it it just was a comment, a friend of mine uh brought us some to the valley last summer. Uh and I said, oh, well, you know, where did you stay in a hotel? No, 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 I just went online and there was a house there and. Rented that for a few days, it was wonderful, you know, on the river and I'm going, so that was not Airbnb, no, no, it was vert, no, no, it was just. Somebody put up their house and said, come and rent it, and they did, and they had a great time, and so I I think there could be more there. Um uh just under uh page thirty-two of ownership affordability analysis. Um and and you have the. The estimated monthly housing costs, et cetera. Uh I'm just wondering how current this information is, given the um recent interest rates increases. Um I know there's lots and lots of people who are are very apprehensive right now. Because they have a fair-sized mortgage and they had locked in at, you know, two-point-five percent or something, and now they're looking at seven percent. Um I'm I'm just wondering, are these fairly current with with the current mortgage rates or?
We used, so when we did the affordability analysis, we um with the three different scenarios of the down payments. We included the four percent insurance rate that's needed for down payments that are less than twenty percent. We did it over twenty-five years um and used five-point-one-four percent as the interest rate. So that was kind of the target, I think that was, I'd have to go back into um the report itself to see the details, but I think that was the average. Of the five banks at that time when we did the analysis, so we set it at five-point-one-four, twenty-five years, including that four percent insurance.
Um page thirty-five says key housing needs. Um and I I'm just looking at uh second one down on the list there. Is that providing smaller, two-bedroom, independent-living, single-story homes for seniors likely downsized to support an aging population? Um you are aware of the new Sunshine Development, uh which which kind of fits in that niche, I think, pretty well. Um so just a comment there, just promoting the new sunshine. A couple of other things, I I was just wondering if we knew how many um units, housing units have been taken. Out of the market because of the flood mitigation. Do we have the approximate number for that? Any idea? Because that has certainly been an issue.
I don't have the exact answer, I can take that away, I um, yeah, but I can look into it.
Uh second question, I'm just wondering, we we talk about um. The need for for increased housing, I'm just wondering if we had any idea. Even approximately, how many serviced lots, empty serviced lots that we might have. Available for housing in Drumheller right now. Because there seem to be a fair number of empty lots around, so I'm just curious, did you get that number?
It's uh it's pretty dynamic, um because there's a lot on the private sector side of things. I have uh the town-owned lots. Um pretty well documented and that a lot of them are listed on MLS, um so I can provide that pretty quickly. Um but yeah, I tend to uh if developer is asking me, someone interested in developing. Uh go to MLS each time and just point out the exact ones. But that that's the best reference point for available lots, in my opinion.
Yeah, there seems to be quite a few empty lots, so you would think that, yeah.
Yeah, there is uh spots available to develop, yeah.
Um one other thing, uh you talk about the fab homes um in Bussano. Uh I know we looked at these, actually a couple of years ago, we went into Calgary, Bob Shetty and. Dr. Ram and a couple of us actually looked at these fab homes. Very, very interesting. I mean, I don't know if you've you've actually been in these, but these are designed just for seniors. Like they have a padded floor, so that if somebody falls over, right? They have um counters that can raise and lower, depending if somebody's in a wheelchair and then they come out of a wheelchair, you can raise. They're really, really quite interesting. Um the problem was, and this was again prior to COVID, they were over five to six-hundred thousand dollars at that time. Um so I think Bussano got in there just at the right time to get their development, because I would imagine those now. Um you know, for a thousand square foot, well, they're probably eight-hundred-and-fifty square foot, probably. You know, seven, eight-hundred thousand dollars, so uh really neat, neat kind of a concept, but I don't know how we could afford those. Um the other one, I just wanted to mention uh municipal housing initiatives. Uh at the FCM, again, I talked to a number of places and I, I think it was uh Prince Rupert. And I I can't be sure, because I talked to a whole bunch of people, a whole bunch of communities, and they said one of their initiatives that they were doing, they were taking. Um finding, identifying in their community, a couple of um older homes that were on smaller lots. Um and they were literally through the municipality, buying the lots, demolishing the homes and building a fourplex and renting it. And they said the amount of money that they they were getting from the rent basically paid for buying the lots, demolishing the homes and building the fourplex. Um so they were, you know, kind of break even at at worst. Uh and and that's kind of the concept that we're doing in Sunshine Lodge, that that tear down the old five-hundred wing, build the new units. Uh we borrowed five million dollars to do that, but the amount of rent that we're going to make from those units is basically going to pay for that, that amount of money that we borrowed. So it isn't going to cost us anything, and we add to the the seniors' housing inventory. And the last comment, uh just on employee housing, again, that that's a huge issue in this community. Uh you know, we're trying to promote tourism and and we just don't have enough people to manage all of the tourism industry that we have. Um and I know my my daughter at the museum, for example, she does, she's in in director of visitor services, so she has to hire about twenty-five, thirty people every year. Tries to hire as many people as she can from the town, but she ends up with lots of people from out of town, and they come here and they just go. Nowhere to stay, there's just nowhere to stay. Um so the employee housing, if if we're going to be a tourism town, uh you know, that's a, that's a problem that we, I think we have to solve. So thank you for the presentation.
Patrick?
Thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to the the implementation plan, e- especially the the question. The quandary that we're in is how do we develop new stock that is competitive with the relatively affordable stock that we do have, like. Can we figure out ways to actually build a three-bedroom house that would be competitive with what we have? I think those, that's something that we really need to tackle in that plan.
Yeah, you're right, there's uh market forces there, um um just from like a cost of construction and the interest rates that was uh raised earlier as well. Um one of the good things about the plan is, you know, we have a great list of. Uh funding mechanisms that are available that we can promote to private and uh and potentially non uh. Our non-for-profit partners as well, so we can, we can work on that. Um also, which uh some great uh content in their report is what we've done uh to date. Which is our flexible land use bylaw, um you know, reducing our development permit times. And the incentives that uh council has already uh approved for development. Um these are, these are great differentiators uh for the valley, and we could can continue to uh use those to. To uh talk to developers about finding that project that works.
Are some of these funding opportunities outlined here uh available to the private sector too, or?
Yeah, uh there's been um funding opportunities um listed uh in the, in the slides here that are available for both, yeah.
Sorry, just add a comment on that. The main thing with the the funding opportunities for private development is that typically another level of government funding is required, so that commitment of town-owned land. Or resourcing is, or provincial funding is typically required to make sure that that funding is being allocated properly and resources are being used properly. So it's not just that a private developer could go and get it, you definitely need the support from the town.
Stephanie?
Thank you very much for the presentation, there's lots of information in there. I was wondering if we looked into the homeless population at all and, because I didn't notice anything on that.
Yeah, that was definitely included in here, so one of the goals is the facilitating housing with supports. So that's where we looked at the folks that are living in insecure housing. And addressing emergency and transitional housing, so we know that there's no emergency housing uh currently available. So I didn't um highlight that specifically, but we did include actions for that. To make sure that we're addressing um those, not providing support services, encouraging uh folks to reach out to different partners. Working with landlords to secure units, so we can have, or the town can have. Um spaces for folks to go if they're in immediate need of housing or they're getting evicted or something happened. So working with the community and partners to do that.
Thank you.
Crystal?
Yes, sorry about that, I just had one more um question, so when Reg was talking about like engagement of other partners, is this something that would. This is in regards to the short-term rental policy, would it be something we could consider doing like a task force like we did with the CN Rails Trail? Is that something that would work?
Yeah, I definitely uh think that's an option uh going forward for next step is to have a. Uh uh the task force, if 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 that's what you want to call it, but definitely pulling all the partners together could be a standing committee as well. Um because uh one of the great things that happened through this process is we developed a really great list of stakeholders. And folks in the community that wanted more information as we went through our um uh engagement plan. And so we have all those good contacts and interested folks to, that we can leverage uh. And and continue to build relationships with uh to get help on on the initiatives, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I just uh have a couple here I want to ask, just Reg, you make sure that that website will be converted. So that uh all this information is on it. Um we need to be promoting promoting those secondary suites that you had talked about. Um I would like to see. Uh when I, when I summarize this whole thing, and when you talk about needing more three-bedroom and four-bedroom, I think. From what I've been hearing from especially millennials and seniors. Is if we built a condo complex that was thirty or forty units, we'd open thirty or forty houses, which would solve a lot of the three, four-bedroom issues. And um another one big thing I'm hearing is density for seniors, again, seniors, as you said, that's going to be our next greatest. Uh concern, so as we have a couple of spaces of the town open right now, I think that's something we can. Get very dense, we can get a lot of people in in the space, because seniors don't want the three-thousand-square-foot homes, so. So I think overall and uh. And Marissa, I think we got to deal with the assessments on reviewing on some of that too, that would solve some of our issues. So therefore, I think um I appreciate the information, I look forward to uh getting this going. You, I know you're working on a pamphlet to promote to builders, I think we need to get that ready and going. We've already done a couple of drawings or working on a couple of drawings for some of these spaces to give builders ideas anyways. Um so I think if anything I could say, Reg is is um, you know, you need to target. Somewhere early February that we can uh actually be promoting these spaces that we have. Town-owned spaces, we've got two or three now, we've got all these uh empty lots. To talk of these uh fourplexes and stuff like that, I mean, we just need to start promoting this stuff. All right, okay, anything else? All right, Courtney, thank you very much for all the work on this, and um yeah, we're, we need to get on this, we can't keep talking anymore. We need to get, get builders here and get moving, because our people need places to live. Okay, well, thank you very much. All right, well, that um concludes our council meeting, so therefore, council, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Stephanie?
I move that council adjourn the meeting.
All right, all in favor, or second or please, sorry, Patrick, all in favor? Carrie, okay, well, thank you everyone for being with us, have a.